I'm M. I'm M. I'm M. I'm M. Welcome to speak on it with who you with Kirk though. I'm M. I'm M. I'm M. I'm M. Welcome, welcome to speak on it with who you with Kirk though. Welcome to speak on it with who you with Kirk though. I'm M. I'm M. I'm M. I'm M. Welcome, welcome to speak on it with who you with Kirk though. Welcome, welcome to speak on it with who you with Kirk though. I'm M. Welcome, I'm M. Welcome, I'm M. Welcome, I'm M. Welcome, welcome, welcome to speak on it with who you with Kirk though. Welcome to speak on it with who you with Kirk though. I'm M. Welcome, welcome, I'm M. Welcome, welcome, I'm M. Welcome, welcome, I'm M. Welcome, welcome, I'm M. Welcome to speak on it with who you with Kirk though. Welcome, welcome to speak on it with who you with Kirk though. I'm M. Welcome, welcome, I'm M. Welcome, welcome, I'm M. Welcome, welcome, I'm M. Welcome, welcome, I'm M. Welcome to speak on it. Welcome, welcome to speak on it. I'm M. Welcome to speak on it. Welcome, welcome to speak on it. I'm M. Welcome to speak on it. Welcome, welcome to speak on it. I'm M. Welcome to speak, welcome to speak, welcome to speak, welcome. I'm M. Welcome to speak, 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 I'm M. I'm M. I'm M. I'm M. I'm M. Who you with Kirk though?
Welcome to speak on it with who you with Kirk though. I'm M. Who you with Kirk though? Happy Sunday to everyone. Hopefully y'all had a great weekend. You know, I've been talking about this for so long. Uh, tonight, we have special guests on the show tonight. We have, um, two brothers that are running for the, uh, uh, city council in the city of Grand Prairie. Won't, y'all, to be able to, want to introduce them to you, for you can understand where they stand on, where they coming from, and how can you support them? Because the thing else, when, when I talk about these two brothers on there, I don't want you to get it confused. They're not running against each other. They are running for two different places in the city of Grand Prairie. So, if you know someone that lives in the city of Grand Prairie, share this with them, call them, tell them they need to check out this show, because here are some future representative of the city of Grand Prairie. Want to welcome, um, uh, brother Kirk Johnson to the show. Junior Izunu to the show. Welcome, how y'all doing today?
It's good to be here. Thank you for having us.
No problem at all. Uh, you can also live chat with us in the chat room. Um, Facebook, YouTube, Periscope, Twitch, Twitter. D Live is always in the house. Um, so you can also live chat with us. And also, if you have questions for them, you can also call in tonight. Nine seven two five nine one three six six five. Nine seven two five nine one three six six five. This is very, uh, a personal setting, because if you have questions about someone that is, that is gonna run for office in your city, like the city of Grand Prairie, this is your opportunity to be able to ask them questions right up front and be able to get an answer right on the spot. So, uh, Mr. Johnson, how you doing?
I'm, I'm doing great. Thank you for having me this evening.
No problem. Uh, give us a background of you. Um, what you all about? Uh, and the reason why you are running for city council?
All right, uh, I'm Kirk Johnson. I'm originally from Street Portland. Uh, I want to graduate from high school. I knew we didn't have funds to send me to college, so I enlisted, enlisted in the Navy, uh, to see the world. Uh, during that time in my career, I decided to get my degree in business administration, so I can become a Navy supply co-officer. Uh, after I completed my degree, I, I applied and accepted to be a supply co-officer in the Navy and I retired in two thousand eight. Since then, I've been working for the government. Uh, we go out as a small team that, uh, closed banks. That's something I enjoy doing, uh, because, uh, it's something I should do as a logistics officer in the Navy. Uh, I have a wife, three kids who are grown, uh, out the house, and also have three grandkids. Uh, the reason why I'm running for city council is because I believe we need a change, uh, in our leadership. I believe I possess the leadership skills, uh, the educational background, and it, plus the experience, uh, and particularly right now looking at, uh, a bond issue within the city of Grand Prairie. Uh, we've had, uh, we've had a survey that's come out about, it would spend two more dollars for trash collection and have less service. You know, things like that to me doesn't make sense. And a survey, uh, shouldn't have to go out to determine whether you need to, uh, pay to get less and more. In particular, I'm looking at the bond issue where I want to ensure that the money stays within the city of Grand Prairie, uh, meaning we need to employ, uh, many, uh, citizens within Grand Prairie to get that money back and that those tax dollars remain within the city. And, and last, lastly on that, I would like to ensure that, uh, funds are equitably distributed amongst all qualified vendors that, that's applying. That's about it.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you for serving. Uh, retired from the Navy. Had three kids, a wife, and three grandkids, you're right?
Uh, correct.
Okay. I appreciate it and, um, um, this is the time that you can actually come in and, and, uh, be able to ask these brothers questions. Uh, ask question and, um, and be able to get some of these questions answered. Uh, Junior, uh, tell us a little bit about yourself.
For sure, man. Well, first and foremost, I'd like to thank you for just giving me the opportunity to come here and speak with you today and talk about the future of Grand Prairie and the good things that we can do in this great city. So my name again is Junior Izanu. I'm running for city council here in Grand Prairie for the place eight at large seat, meaning that the entire city of Grand Prairie can vote in this election, regardless if you live in Dallas, Tarrant, or Ellis County. Doesn't matter, as long as you live in Grand Prairie, you can vote. Um, I've currently, I currently am a student at University of Texas at Arlington. I'll be graduating this May with a bachelor's of arts and political science. For the last two years, I've served as a substitute teacher and a tutor throughout the Dallas forward area, working in many underprivileged, underserved communities, especially in South Dallas, Oak Cliff, Pleasant Grove, Highland Hills, parts of Fort Worth and Mansfield ISD, where I serve a lot of students that do live in Grand Prairie, but live on the Tarrant County side at the, uh, bottom part of Grand Prairie. I'm a big advocate for education, for information, for access to information, so people can make educated decisions. I believe that that's something that can help our community going forward, just having access to information, having the ability to make educated decisions once you have that information that you're seeking. I decided to run for city council primarily based on the fact that I believe that we are all called to serve our communities, just depending on which way you want to go about it. We, we all have a gift. I believe that mine specifically deals with public service and good public policy. I believe that that's the way that I will take, that's the path that I will take to affect this world and make it a better place. Because this community, the people in this, in our great city, are the reason that I'm here right now. Had it not been for the investments put into our community, for the good leaders that came before me, for the black and brown leaders that invested in our community and allowed me to have the opportunity to be successful, I wouldn't be here today. So I want to take this opportunity as a way to pay it forward and pay back the great people that came before me and allowed me, a young black man, a young, actually an immigrant as well from Nigeria, to be, be able to succeed in this country and succeed in our city.
Man, that's dope. Now, you said you graduated in May?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, now I had the opportunity to meet this young brother and, um, uh, when he started talking, I was like, man, you, you all right? To me, he sounded like a young Barack Obama, but, um, but he's, I'm, if it's okay, I'm gonna share your age. Uh, he's only twenty-two years old and trying to make a, a difference in his city. So, to be twenty-two and trying to make a difference, you have to start somewhere. And this is what he's trying to do. So, let me ask, um, uh, Mr. Johnson. Um, I know you mentioned about the bond that was done and where they trying to, uh, force the city of Grand Prairie to pay two dollars more to pick up trash and less service?
Correct. They sent a survey and they asked the citizens to respond back, uh, without a, a return selfish envelope. So you had to pay to send that back. And I thought, thought that was interesting. But when you're trying to, uh, get buy-in from people, I think we could have received buy-in from all the citizens by the city council and going out and talking within their communities, all meetings. That doesn't cost you anything but time. But when you sent out a survey and then these, the council backtracked, like, well, we're trying to get buy-in from you now. It's the thing I always say, they put the cart before the horse. So you have to understand, you have first. So, and that's by going and talking to the, uh, members in your district and within the city to get a feel, a pulse. How would they feel about supporting an idea of paying two dollars more for services with less service? It doesn't pass the, the common sense test to me. So, go ahead.
No, go ahead, go ahead, finish, finish.
So, went into the, the bond election. Uh, that's something, uh, that I, I feel strong about. If, if the bond passed and I'm elected to city council, uh, I'm gonna, I want oversight over the bond money to ensure that, uh, the, the funds are distributed. Uh, twenty years ago, we had a bond election in Grand Prairie of seventy-six million dollars. I'm curious to find out how many of those contracts went to minority contractors. And we need to ensure we have, uh, oversight where a fair amount of that money is going to minority contractors. You can look up on Google, by the year twenty fifty-three, black wealth is gonna be zero. So we don't make changes today. Where are we going to be in twenty fifty-three? I think it's gonna be more closer to between twenty forty and twenty fifty, black wealth in America is wiped out. So we have to ensure, it's not that we're asking for anything more, we just think for a fair treatment, that we should have a seat at the table and there that's ensuring oversight, to ensure that qualified, but no, understand if they're, if they're not on this, how get on the list? How do you get an opportunity to bid for these contracts? Ensure you have all your paperwork in order. Today comes out. As part of my job as a contracting officer in the Navy, I ensured we had requests for proposals sent out. I, I, I had to write the statement of work. So I have the expertise to understand how the contracting process actually works. The incumbent, in which said, yes, that he does not have the time to do the job as the councilman. So why are we gonna give him another three years? Asking the voters, you know, what did you, what type of credentials should they have? The Dallas Morning News, uh, put out their voter's guide this past Monday. Women voters had a voter guide. So I, I, I encourage everyone to go there and, and read what we had to say and, and do your comparison. You'll see there's a huge difference.
Yeah, that is, that is a couple of strength. Uh, you are listening, speaking with who you with Kirk though. We have, um, uh, representative, uh, candidate Kirk Johnson and candidate Junior Izunu. I'm hoping I'm saying it right, because I'm known to cut up names really.
You're pretty close. It's Izanu, but you basically, basically got it, yeah, yes, sir.
Um, but I want to welcome everyone that's tuning in now. Uh, Fresh Veggie, thank you for, uh, tuning in. And also, um, so you're saying that the, that the city sent out a survey to the citizen of Grand Prairie without a return, uh, posted pay to get the survey back?
Correct.
So, so it sounds like to me they really did not want to know how the, how the citizen really felt, because we're in the middle of a pandemic and the, and a lot of people have lost their jobs.
Absolutely.
But you won't feel the postage.
You, you don't want me to get on that subject, do you? About the jobs and the marketplace?
Hey, that's, that's what we need to know, because here it is. We're in a, a city that, that is, um, that, that is very diverse, but we're not, the city is not represented by everyone in the city, from my understanding.
That's correct. We're a majority minority city. We're a majority Hispanics, blacks, whites, whites and others. Represents the city that serves the city. However, when you look at the leadership, because you're a minority, you should lead. Looking for qualified minorities that can go up there and lead and bring new ideas to the city. Because historically, since I've been here, since, well, when I came here back in the eighties, when I was enlisted in the Navy, Grand Prairie was primarily a cow pasture town. Arlington City, the first small, uh, the parks, and they've been growing ever since. Why is it that we're their neighbor and we're not able to take advantage of those tax revenues that the city of Arlington has been able to do weekend and weekend, uh, over and over in the Highlands? Now, and that the Highlands was gonna come here, but then offered, hey, free land, you know where the, the, gonna go at that point? We have to be shrewd in decision-making to get the grocery stores here, restaurants, and businesses that pay livable wages. When I was on the city planning his own board, I actually voted for a grocery, a grocery store to be on the northeast corner of Great Southwest Parkway, no, uh, uh, Lake Ridge Parkway in Captain Wilson. It's over there where you see Smoothie King, right behind there. There's a, a, a lot of, it was gonna be ATB. But what happened? Don't know. City council hasn't said anything about it. But if you look at it now, chances of ATB coming there is, it's impossible, because they, when they do their demographic, they look at what's around to support the ATB. We gym, uh, twenty-four hour fitness, whatever they put over there. We, just like when they put the fitness connection in the old Abersons. And I was told that we don't want to compete against the YMCA that's down here on Carrier Parkway. So if we don't work with them, by having a, uh, a recreation center that's sponsored by the city, built by the city, why are we allowing all these recreations facilities to come in here for tax dollars? I've never believed all money is good money. All tax dollars is not good dollars. So what is the city like ten years from now? A bunch of gyms, racing centers, volleyball, things like that? We need to look at, hey, what's the best use of this land today? And try to bring that business in, whether we have to wait a year or two or three. But some folks believe, hey, we're getting tax revenue. I just disagree with.
I actually, um, have friends that actually live in that area. And I remember not too long ago, uh, went to visit them, realized that the Aberson was no longer there. So I had to go to the Tom Thumb, uh, to get some food, because that was the closest store to their home between the Tom Thumb, the Walmart or the Krogers. And I chose to go to Tom Thumb, because they live right in that area. But I end up buying some food and got it to their home. And as we opened it up, it was bad. So I really feel that we need neighborhoods. I don't know if, what it is, but I know Tom Thumb and Aberson owned by the same company. But we do, do need more diverse on the grocery stores. Because sometime these stores move in your neighborhood and they will put bad food out on the, um, on the shelves, which is really bad. Um, and so, uh, Junior, we don't want to leave you out of the conversation. So, uh, you could come, jump in whenever you want to. Uh, and Trail Jones, thank you for watching on Facebook. You can actually, um, uh, live chat with us in the chat room. Uh, you are listening to Speak On It With Who You With Kirk though. Uh, we are talking with, uh, two candidates from the city of Grand Prairie. Um, Kurt Johnson and also Junior Izunu. I, um,
Close enough.
Um, so we are listening to Fresh Veggie say that is true about the grocery stores. Um, now Junior, I'm gonna back up just a little bit, because I didn't give you the opportunity to speak on the fact that that survey, because that survey, when I think about the survey, uh, you sending it out to the community, but you're not sending a, a return postage with it. Most surveys have a return postage. And it sound kind of like, to me, another form of, I don't want to say voter suppression, but don't want, really don't want to know exactly what the people feel. So, what is your feeling on that?
Yeah, I was gonna go along with what you and Kurt, oh, both Kurt's, I guess you could say. What, but what both of y'all just said, because just ingenuousness, it's not honest, they're not being real or genuine about caring about what the people think. Had they cared, they would have sent a return label that's already paid for, you could send back to the city. And the thing is, the people of Grand Prairie are not dumb. Uh, people in the city are very educated, various, uh, they're, they're very wise and smart. Because if you go through some of the social media forums and read what the residents were saying, they were saying their, the, the city council already made up their mind regarding this issue. They're just trying to feed us some crumbs to make it seem like they're receptive to our, to our, um, to our opinions and what we want to see improved in the city. The people of Grand Prairie were saying this on many different social media outlets. And our people are very wise. And this is why we need representatives on the city council that will actually speak to the residents. Like Kurt said, we, me and Kurt are, are, are outside every day trying to reach residents, knocking on doors, speaking with the people of Grand Prairie on a day-to-day basis. Those that are, those that we're running against on the city council right now, they're not outside in the neighborhoods, not, they're not in the communities. They don't care enough to actually speak to residents. It's like whenever I met you, Kurt Dogg, where did I meet you? I knocked on your door, I rang your doorbell, and we spoke for about five to ten minutes, got to know each other. We spoke about the issues that we want to see improved in our community. And that's how you improve your community, having those honest, genuine conversations to see where, where we can find common ground and where we can move forward on. And that's what me and Kirk Johnson will bring to the city council and will do to improve our city. Allowing the residents to actually have an input, have a voice in what goes on in the city government and not sending them a survey that we really aren't gonna even look at. So, that was my opinion on that.
Okay. Now, you can also live chat with us in the chat room. If it's easy for you to call, you can call nine seven two five nine one three six six five. Nine seven two five nine one three six six five. It's, this is a time to really ask, um, your candidates that is running, because early voting start tomorrow. Um, so you definitely want to ask these questions for when you get ready to go to the polls, you know exactly who you're gonna vote for. Now, also, I also tell you, I talk about it all the time, the importance of, of, um, uh, voting locally. Because you have to realize locally is where our laws are made. It's not just the federal, it's the local laws. So you definitely need to get out and vote, because here it is. You putting people in position that is gonna be able to encourage certain laws to be passed. And this is what we need. Um, this is the type of, um, represent, reputation that, that we need, representative that we need to be able to represent for everyone. So, um, also, now, you also mentioned earlier, Mr. Johnson, about, um, uh, oversight. Right now, do the city of Grand Prairie have a police oversight board? Uh, would that's something that y'all may try to push in the future?
Uh, I definitely try to push. I've had, uh, early this year, on two separate occasions, uh, meetings with the chief of police. And he's definitely, I, I expressed to him, we don't want to have any, uh, jurisdictions here in Grand Prairie, and what are you doing to prevent that? And he expressed to us how they vet the officers, the vet, even after they're hired, they continue to vet the officers almost for two years to ensure that they're a good fit for, uh, Grand Prairie. Thus far, we have not had, uh, a serious police shooting incident that, that's questioned. But, uh, I'm for, uh, a police review board where citizens are there. I, I believe that that's part of being, uh, inclusive in this, in the city. And we can collaborate together and find out what we need for, uh, officers for, for training. Also, I would say ten years, less than ten years ago, we had, uh, an opportunity to vote on the, uh, quarter cent sales tax to hire additional officers. And that's something I expressed, uh, the other day at Lulac, that we hired those additional officers and we saw police officers crisscrossing. It's like they're stemming on top of each other. So we felt safe. Now, since the city has grown and it's continued to grow, it appears if the officers are stretched a little bit thinner, that you, they're not as visible, in, in particular in the area that we live in, uh, Westchester. And a lot of folks in the Westchester community have spoken about, uh, I don't see the officers as much as I used to. However, comma, when you go down to the peninsula area, I'm seeing and three driving behind each other. Honestly, it's like, okay, they, those are the higher-end half-million-plus-dollar homes down there. Although we have three fifty to four fifty, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars homes in the Westchester area, but those are the newer homes. And some people have the perception that the police are, they're taking the, the role of less protect them, a little bit more than here. But I really don't think that, and I don't believe that. I just believe that we need to go back and look at the plan where we hire those additional officers. Uh, do we need to go back and look at the plan and see, do we need to hire additional officers on top of another ten or fifteen? So we can have. People have often told me they don't like coming to Grand Prairie, because everywhere you look, there are police officers driving around. I said, that's why I live in Grand Prairie, because I'm paying for their extra protection. And I think we need to do that. Uh, also, we can't forget about the firefighters. The firefighters, uh, play a ver- valuable role here. Uh, on twenty and thirty, they're constantly dealing with traffic accidents. Have the adequate amount of firefighters on the force and the fire, fire stations. So I'm for all public safety, uh, for police and fire, so we can have that sense of, uh, calmness about ourselves, that hey, we know that if something happened, the response time is gonna be very minimal, as opposed to, uh, a few years ago, we knew that when they on twenty, you see how the, the fire trucks block off the, the street. So the city actually bought an old fire truck somewhere so that they could block off the streets instead of taking one of the fire trucks that might be needed in case of a real emergency, a fire emergency. So I'm for all of that.
Okay, and what about you, Junior? How do you feel about?
Yes, answering your initial question regarding, I guess, an oversight committee to, you know, keep the police accountable. I definitely support that, because here in Grand Prairie, we support our police officer. We support our public safety official a hundred percent. But at the same time, we must make sure that those that we trust to keep us safe and protect and serve, if you will, are always doing that a hundred percent of the time. And whenever I speak, speak with some residents, they do have some cause for concern, especially with things that are going on nationwide about some police officers. Generally, in Grand Prairie, our police officers do a great job. But at the same time, I still believe in accountability. We must make sure to take care of every single resident. And I believe in letting residents come together and call things out when they think that something is wrong. Not saying that anything is wrong in particular in Grand Prairie, but let's always leave a channel for a discussion to be had. Let's leave a channel to have residents voice their concerns and their grievances if, if it gets to that level. And I just, I, that's why I support, uh, police, um, about, not, not advisory, but, uh, sir, not, what's the word?
Oversight board.
Oversight, oversight board, yeah, exactly. Just to, you know, keep, keep everything in a check and just promote accountability. Accountability is the most important thing, especially with us trying to be public officials. Keep us accountable as well, once we are elected, God willing. Um, accountability is very important for us to, you know, keep our government doing the right thing and looking out for all people in the community.
Okay. Well, I, I definitely gonna, gonna, uh, continue to talk about y'all until after the election and hopefully after May first, y'all can come back on the show and let everybody. And hopefully after May first, y'all can come back on the show and let everybody know that y'all have won that office. And, um, uh, we know that early voting do start tomorrow. And people, I say this all the time on the show, you have to get out and vote. If you want to make a difference, get out and vote for every election. It's very important because if it wasn't important, they would actually wouldn't be trying to change the voting laws to prevent us from voting. That tells you your vote do count. So definitely get out and vote and, um, and let's make a difference. Um, if you are in the city of Grand Prairie, uh, definitely, um, starting tomorrow morning, you could go and vote. And May first is the election day. Please don't come back on May first saying, oh, I didn't get a chance to vote. I ran out of time, I can't vote, I didn't vote. It's no excuses. You have to vote like your life depend on it. Because it actually do, if you don't vote, just like they sent out these surveys to ask about, uh, the trash pickup and raising the price on the trash and, and cutting the days down. That's very important because here it is, you may be at two days a week, but then they drop you down to one day a week. Well, what's gonna happen with that if, especially after a holiday? If your trash is at the end of the weekend, the holiday is on, on a Sunday. Well, guess what? That trash is gonna have to stay in your house that whole time. And that's gonna bring critters in. So definitely get out and vote, um, for them not to send a self-addressed envelope, a return envelope back that tells you what they think about you. So definitely get out and vote. It's very important to get out and vote. During voting season, I know you really can't see it, but I say, vote or miss out. And the miss out is, you can make a difference. You could definitely make a difference in your city and our state because these elections are very important. Also, um, uh, excuse me, I could go a long way. My wife said you should run for office as much as you talk, but, um, but, um, Mr. Johnson, want to know about, um, um, who are you running to and what place are you running, are you running for?
I'm running in Grand Prairie for place six. I'm running against the incumbent Warridge. I'm glad you brought that back up because, uh, during the Lulac meeting yesterday, he had mentioned he doesn't have the time to serve as the city council. So if he doesn't have the to serve and you're trying to call and get something taken care of, who are you gonna call next? You know, you need someone who has the flexibility in their schedule, who can, uh, call you back within 24 hours or 48 hours at the, at the latest. But most important, you want to be able to have someone you can, you can contact. Not someone gonna say, hey, I don't have the time, so why are you sitting on, why are you sitting on the council? The council is there to serve and, uh, help the citizens out with things that they have issues with, in particular dealing with government. That's what you're there for. You're supposed to run interference. Uh, I've always been a servant leader in the military and I'm still gonna be a servant leader to the community. Where, when I was in the military, uh, I told my sailors, you don't work for me. And that's the way I've always looked at it because I, I've never liked the relationship where someone works for me. No, we, if, if we're not working together, I work for you. Although I understand, I can understand my position of authority and still provide that same service even, uh, as the city councilman.
Okay, and what about you, uh, Mr. Junior?
Could you restate the question? My signal lagged out.
Okay, I was asking, um, what place are you running for and who are you running against?
Thank you for the question. So I'm running for the place eight at-large seats, meaning that the entire city of Grand Prairie can vote no matter what county you reside in. And I'm running against the incumbent, his name is Greg Geisner or Gistner, depending on who you ask. And there's actually four other people in the race. There's act, there's, um, six people in total, including myself. It's, uh, it's really, it's really competitive race, but I do believe that at the end of the day, it's probably going to be either I or Greg that takes this, um, this, uh, election, like wins the election. But, um, Greg is, uh, an incumbent. He's been in there since 2009. He's similar to Jeff Woolridge, which Kurt is running against as well. And I believe it's time for a change. It's time to put some younger, brighter, you know, I'm not gonna say brighter, but fresher minds that want to see things improve in Grand Prairie and move in a different direction that reflects what the entire community wants and not just one, what a few contractors or buddies of city council members desire.
Okay, so it, you saying it's time for a change. I told you that only sound like, uh, but, but the thing is, I'm all for change for the simple fact. And, and I say this all the time on the show, a lot of people that is in these position, they get comfortable. Kind of like what Mr. Johnson said, the guy that he's running against, he said he don't have time for it. So why are you in that position? It's time for you to move on. So basically you there to, to have a position and to get whatever the council make. But you're not there for the people. We need someone that's gonna be on the front line for the people, working hand in hand with the people. That's why I always tell y'all to, to actually get to know your city council, your city officials, uh, from the mayor on down to the police chief and continue to build a relationship with them. For if they ever decide to start a, um, a police oversight board, they know exactly who you are. Go to your council meeting. I know we're in a pandemic, but most people actually have it virtual now. So you just have to sign up and make a difference like that. Definitely continue to stay on your elected officials because all of them are, are elected. And if you don't get out and vote, you don't have a, have, have a choice who get in there. Because somebody would vote for somebody who they like and they win, there's nothing you can say. So that's why it's so important to get out and vote, let your voice be heard and be able to take a stand. Because we're in some times right now, we have people that is in office, not in, just in the city of Grand Prairie, but all across this world, we have some people in office that don't care anything about us. They would do anything to keep us from voting. So it's very important if we do get out and vote. I, I definitely, um, uh, appreciate both of y'all for coming on. We're not finna leave yet, but I'm glad to hear what y'all have to say. And if, for the ones that just tuning in, you are listening to Speak On With Who You With Kurt Dog. Uh, you can live chat with us. You can also call in to nine seven two five nine one three six six five. Nine seven two five nine one three six six five. And you can ask them questions. Uh, you may come up with questions I haven't came up with and they'll be able to get your answer. Because the thing is, you need to know who representing you. If you don't know who representing you, that's a problem within itself because that lead is saying, you're not voting for them. And the only thing you doing is playing any mini money mo on the ballots. And that's not the way you need to do it. You need to do your homework on your candidates and find out exactly what they stand for. And that's the reason why I invited both of them on because I know for myself, talking with them, I'm like, hey, you sound like y'all are pretty good, so let me bring y'all on my show and be able to let the people know exactly who you are and what you stand for. Also, um, uh, Mr. Junior, um, uh, besides the police oversight board and the person that you running against, you said it's a, it's a close race, it's five other people that is running. And within those five people that is running because, and let me make it known, Mr. Junior, Mr. Johnson is not running against each other. They running for two different places. So please do not get it confused. They running for two different places for the council and the city of Grand Prairie. So when you, when you go to the polls starting tomorrow, please remember Kurt Johnson, uh, Junior Ezeunu. Close enough, but look for Junior.
You'd look for Junior. If you see Junior.
At, for the first name, not for the, not at the end of the name, at the beginning of the name, Junior. So, um, uh, definitely, uh, check out these two brothers. I know I've had the opportunity of talking with both of them and, and even meeting, um, Junior face to face. And within the first couple of minutes of meeting him, I knew this brother can do some big things. Uh, not just in the city of Grand Prairie. I feel like he's gonna be around a pretty good while, as well as Mr. Johnson, for the simple fact, they all about the people. They're not about just one particular section of people. They're about everyone in the city of Grand Prairie. And that was the first thing they said. Um, I asked them, hey, how are you gonna represent the people of Grand Prairie? And they told me they was up front. I'm not just here, um, for one particular race of people. I'm here for everybody. I'm gonna represent everybody. And that's the type of leaders we need because unfortunately the one that Mr. Johnson is, uh, is running against, he said, he don't have time to be a council, but he won't drop out. He won't lead the race. He just feel like, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I said like, he really said this during the forum. I was shocked. I was shocked.
And that's, that tell you a whole bunch. If he's telling them this in a forum where they're having a open discussion, he's telling them, I don't have time to, to, uh, do this, all right, be a city council. But he still want that position. Why? Why should we allow him to, to continue to be in that position? Like I said about any other elected official. Let's give him time where he don't have to do it. He don't have to worry about anything. He don't have to come to the meetings. He don't have to represent the people. Okay, and then also, um, term limit, he's trying to reach his term limit. Um, so what, the term limit for councils, three years or, or, no?
Grand Prairie doesn't have term limits on the council, but the each term lasts for three years.
Oh, so the question is, should the citizens take it to vote? To have term numbers for no more than, I would say nine years. And that way you can, uh, other citizens can plan to run every nine years. Or if this councilman done something that was not good, you can go in and, and run it at the end of the first term or the second term. But you have an idea that when this person's gonna come off the council instead of having someone on the council 20, 30 years. And you see how that's pretty much worked out at our state in federal levels. When you stay 20 and 30 years, how much is really getting done? So you need someone to, with, uh, fresh ideas to keep coming through the pipeline instead of just having someone sit there because you become stagnant and like, you've done what you think you, you can do. It's more, it's, it's about you instead of the people.
So, so how long have they been in office? Uh, uh, both candidates that y'all are running against, how long have they?
Jeff has been in office al- almost nine years. He's trying to do another three. And Greg, the guy I'm running against, he's been in there for almost 12, it'll be 12 years in May. Yeah.
Wow. Well, I once heard, um, one of my doctor told me something that one of his patients said. Said, um, she like a young doctor and an old attorney. And when you break it down, old attorney, the laws don't really change that much. But a young doctor, they change all the time, the procedure change all the time. So you gotta ask yourself, do you want someone that's stuck with old ways, not changing their ways? Or did you want someone to bring in the new procedure and changing as time change? Because time change all the time. And to represent the people, you have to be accustomed to changing. And if you're not accustomed to changing, you're only gonna get the same results.
And that would be a survey with no stamp.
Exactly. I wonder how many time have they sent a survey out like that?
Yeah, just per- performative nonsense, man. Just to seem like you're, you're on, you're acting on behalf of the people in the people's best interest when you're really not. But it's, it's performative nonsense that occurs from some politicians.
So when you look at the Republic coming to ask them to do this, because I'm sure the council didn't think of, hey, let's charge them more and give them less service. So Republic had to come in to approach them with, hey, we can get you the recycling bins that you want and the trash bins that you want, but it's gonna cost everyone some, some skin in the game. But if I even thinking about the two guys on the back of the truck won't have a job. Can we do this? So if those guys on the back of the truck gone, but with the arm lift, they just pick up the garbage can, dump it in there and it keeps going. So it's a one man show. So we had to think about all of that. So if Republic came to the council or, or city leadership and approached them with this recommendation, it should have been squashed right there. It should have never left. That's just my opinion. I would have voted. It doesn't make sense. Not unless Republican does trillions of dollars into our coffers. And then we can figure out another way to get them that, that extra day back. But why, why would you do it? There's this big business coming in and saying, hey, let's do less and get paid more. It doesn't work, but that's how big business operate.
Kind of like, um, some grocery stores trying to go, um, with our cashiers and take it self-checkout totally.
And, and honestly, I used to always go to Sam's, but they have a lot of self-service checkout lanes. So I started going to Costco. Costco is starting it now and it's like, w- w- what's? We're gonna get off topic about city council because we're in the future in, in robotic technology. It's taking away the jobs. And people don't realize, hey, it's not the immigrant that's taking your job that's illegal over here. Technology is taking jobs away from folks. And you look at what's going into the COVID this year, last year, we, we're to more of a service oriented, uh, economy where they want you at the home and they come and deliver to your door. So you never have to leave the house.
Yep, and you could get groceries delivered right at home, just buy a couple of clips. So, yeah, time have changed. I personally, I personally prefer to go to the store if I could see what type of produce I'm getting and all of that.
Absolutely.
And
Absolutely.
Even with, with, um, uh, cutting the jobs of the, um, of the workers that actually come around, pick up your trash. Cause I know for me myself, uh, with my trash guys, I built the relationship with them. Uh, especially summertime, I'd be waiting out in the driveway with some water for them. Because a lot of, a lot of them, they get overlooked. I'm like, hey, I know it's hot on the back of that truck. Let me give you some water or something. Get bottle of waters by two of them for each one of them. And they, they love it because that, when you on a route, you don't have a choice but to get that route done. And they tell me I'm cutting the days back because of a bogus, uh, survey they sent out, which is crazy. So, um, let me ask y'all this because if, and both of you can answer. If someone wanted to get a yard sign, uh, from y'all, how can they get in contact with you and be able to support you?
I, I guess I'll go first.
For me, you can go to my website.
Okay, well, I was gonna say, my bad, I didn't mean to cut you out. My apologies, man. So you can go to my website as well at W W dot vote Junior Ezeunu. My last name is spelled E Z E O N S in Nancy, U S N umbrella dot com. And you can either, uh, sign up there to add your email to the newsletters to get updates regarding the campaign. If you want a yard sign, you can feel free to reach me on my social media, Facebook. If you want a yard sign, you can feel free to reach me on my social media. Facebook is Junior Ezeo for Grand Prairie City Council. Or you can go on my Twitter or my Instagram is at Call Me J R E, Call Me J R E. Any one of those platforms, you can reach me and ask for a yard sign. I have a lot left over. And I would love to distribute them to any residents that may be interested. And uh, yeah, so that's about that. Thank you.
Uh, the fastest way to get a yard sign, if I have, I don't have that many left, is to call me via my cell phone number. That's two one four six four one three three nine zero, or you can text me at my cell and my number is two one four six four four one three three nine zero. Or if you'd like to go and see website, the information I have out there is Kurt Johnson, City Council D I S T and number six dot com. That's Kurt Johnson, City Council, D I S T six dot com. Look forward to hearing from you.
That's, that's great information. I see. Uh, please, if you would like to support them, definitely reach out to them as how can you support? The best way you can support is by sharing this. Uh, if you know someone that lives in the city of Grand Prairie, share this with them to be able to know, hey, we have someone representing us that is about the people and gonna be there for the people. And um, and reach out to them, get your yard signs and ask them, send them a message, ask them question, uh, something that you may wanna know. Because the thing is, in today's society, we need someone that is gonna represent everyone. And not just particular people, we need someone to represent all people of our cities. Um, so definitely do that. Um, Mr. Johnson, um, if, I know we talked briefly before coming live, um, is it anything else you wanna add on that you wanna let the people know about you and what you stand for and why should they vote for you? I know I asked at the beginning, but somebody probably came on late. Let them know why they should vote for you. And then Junior, you answered the same question.
Well, most importantly, we need transparency uh in, in our leadership and our government. We need open and honest communication. We need someone who's gonna get the word out to the people, to everyone within the district or within the city about what's going on at the government level so that you remain informed, so you won't be surprised about uh when I'm knocking on doors, I'm asking about the seventy-five million dollar bond and they're like, we, we don't know anything about that. So uh, and if I'm going to support a bond, if I was on the council, you'll know why I'm supporting the bond and I will go out and try to solicit, solicit that support. Uh, so that's why I'm running for city council. Uh, I need transparency. I need open communication. And I need community involvement uh from everyone. Uh, and we're looking for more people to get involved within the city. There, there's a lot of things you can do on the boards and commissions you can apply for. At, at city council, uh, you get to appoint folks to those boards and commissions. So we need fresh faces on that as well. Uh, the thing that you can do to support me and Junior right now is you go out and vote tomorrow. Take five or ten of your friends and say, hey, let's go out and vote. Need to support uh these two to get on, on, on the council, so we have someone to go to that we may feel comfortable with to share things uh not much with or our concerns. We have them looking to it for us. So uh, it's, it's not all about the black thing. It's about feeling comfortable talking to certain people. Everyone's not comfortable talking to the chief of the police one-on-one or the fire chief or the mayor. Some people, they are. In my background, uh, honestly, my military career, I was typically the only minority officer amongst forty or fifty officers. So I'm very comfortable moving around in, in those areas in my life. So uh, hopefully you guys can get out and vote early and bring others uh with you to vote. Because I think Junior and I have a really good chance of winning. However, if Junior gets into a runoff, that's still good. He's still in the race. We just gotta go back out and vote again and get him elected.
Exactly. Hopefully, uh Junior will run, will be able to win without a doubt. But if it do come to a runoff election, uh Junior, I definitely want you to come back for we can get more people out to um make sure that you, that you win. Because we do need uh fresh thinking in these positions and be able to make a difference. Uh, Junior, if you can ask, answer the same question, uh, why the people should vote for you and exactly what you stand for.
For sure. And I want to echo everything that Kurt just stated. And me and him are very alike on the issues and while we're running for this election, while running, while running our campaigns. And primarily why I'm doing this is because I believe in what good government and good public policy can do to improve lives of people. When you have a leadership that actually cares about each and every resident, quite simply as that. That's why I'm running. I'm running to be that link between the city government and the community. I'm running to be that link that allows people, like Kurt said, allows people to know what's going on in the city government. So whenever you see this development right next to your neighborhood, you know that, you know about it prior to happening. Because a lot of people would tell me, why is this happening in my neighborhood? What, what, what's going on? And they're like, I don't, I don't know what to do. What, where, where can I go? Like, you know, you can contact your city council member to find out what's going on. I didn't know we had city government. This is a big problem because these, these people are supposed to represent you, but you can't be represented by someone you don't know. Let's think about that. You can't be represented by someone you don't know. And that's why I'm running this election. That's why I'm running for this camp, that's why I'm running for this office. Because I truly believe in what good government and good leadership can do. And whether I win or lose, that doesn't matter. What matters is that we keep trying to elect good people and put them in office. That's why I hope Kurt wins his race. If I lose and Kurt wins, he has my support. If he goes to runoff and I lose, he has my support. I will knock on doors for him to win this election because he's a good man that cares about the people of Grand Prairie, cares about the people of District Six. And we need more like-minded brothers and sisters that wants to help out our community and make our world a better place. That's what we need. And that's why I want to applaud you and thank you, Kurt Dog, for your show and for all the good that you're doing in our community, trying to advance good good policies and put people in positions that they can shine and do good things for the community. So thank you again for allowing us to speak today, sir.
No problem at all. I appreciate you and um people. Early voting start tomorrow. You may not be in the city of Grand Prairie, but you could be in any city. Check your, your, your voter registration. Make sure you are registered to vote. Now, I say this also on the show quite a bit. If you have a felony and you're not paying, you still not on paper, you haven't paid all your dues, please check with your state, get your, get your voting rights back. Most states will allow you to vote longest you're off paper and you paid all your dues. Get them back. Get them back. You can too make a difference. And not only in your city, but also in this world. Because it goes all the way up. So definitely get it back. Um, I appreciate both of y'all for coming on. If it's anything y'all want the people to know about you before we go, uh, please let it know. Um, not, not just the city of Grand Prairie, uh, but also tomorrow night. Uh, Melissa Ward would be on the show tomorrow. Uh, she was gonna be on last Thursday, but had a family emergency, but she will be on tomorrow night. And early election start there also. Uh, just say across this country, early elections start tomorrow. So definitely get out and vote. Uh, before we go, is it something else y'all wanna add before, before we cut off?
I would like to add, uh, this coming Wednesday, Junior and I will be at the Chamber of Commerce uh, uh, event for uh Canada's Forum. So I would like for you guys to come out and, and support us during the Canada's Forum. At uh, for the Chamber of Commerce is gonna be at the Grand Prairie ISD building of uh Beltline. So you should be able to look up on Grand Prairie Chamber of Commerce, uh, or just look up Grand Prairie Independent School District Headquarters. That's off Beltline, Grand Prairie.
Yeah, okay. Uh, definitely go out and, and support them. Get to meet them face to face. Ask questions. Do your background check. Make sure you know exactly who you want to represent you before you go into the, into the polling booth. And you can make a fine decision to uh be able to go in and say, you know what? I met this person. They sound okay. I think I wanna represent them. I know they have my support. I will represent them. And uh, Junior, anything you wanna add before, before we sign off?
Yeah, just whichever, whoever you decide to vote for and wherever you live, it doesn't matter. Just make sure your voice is heard. Make sure you go out and vote. Make sure you stay engaged in the political process because the political process is the mechanism that we can use as black people, as people of color, as marginalized individuals to affect change and move in the right direction. So make sure your voice is heard. Make sure you tell your brother, your sister, your mother, your father, any family members, cousins, any friends, tell them to go out and vote. Local politics matters, local elections matter, local government is crucial. And we need more of us in these places of power to affect change and move us in the right direction. So go out and vote, let your voices be heard.
Exactly. And also I wanna add this, if um, if you did not catch the information and you still have questions, you can call me at nine seven two five nine one three six six five nine seven two five nine one three six six five. Or you can text me and I will send you their information. Uh, for you can get in contact with them if you need a yard sign. Um, or you wanna, wanna find out more information, you can reach out to me and I will forward it to them. So we need to do this together as a community and as people of this community because we're in some trying time. We see a lot of things that's going on. When you talk about crimes going up, but they're in a position to, to put a stop to it because right now the leaders that is in there don't have time to do it. So I'm just saying, it's, it's up to you on what you wanna do, but as for me and my family, we will support them. So you have been listening to speak on it with who you with Kirk though. I'm him, who you with Kirk though. Wanna thank um, Mr. Johnson and Mr. Junior for coming on tonight. And um, until tomorrow night, eight P M Central Time. I love each and every one of you. Uh, Ms. Marissa Ward will be on the show tomorrow. She running for, for a council uh seat in Longview, Texas. So she will be on tomorrow. So you definitely wanna tune in tomorrow also. Until then, peace.